Good evening. Today is Wednesday, March 20th, 2024, 6:30 PM. We're here for our regular board meeting. Before that, we're going to have confidential. So we'll start with roll call, please.
Mr. Grippo.
President.
Dr. Hopkins.
Mr. Inosensio.
Mr. Jackson.
President.
Ms. LaCorte.
Ms. Maris.
Here.
Mr. Parker.
President.
Mr. Shabon.
Ms. Singh.
Here. Just for the record, Sammy will not be attending the meeting tonight. Can we have the Open Public Meetings Act, please?
In accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act, Public Law 1975, Chapter 231 Sunshine Law, copies of the public meeting notice were sent to the Courier-News, The Home News Tribune, The Star Ledger, The Franklin Reporter, Tap into Franklin Township, Franklin Township Clerk Manager, District Schools, Offices and Associations, PTO Presidents, and posted on the district website.
Thank you. Can I get a motion to adjourn to confidential session for the purpose of discussing confidential matters, including a student matter, a special education settlement agreement, and workers' compensation settlement agreement? Minutes of the confidential session will be made public when the reason for confidentiality no longer exists. I heard Nancy, and then I heard Mr. Grippo. Thank you. So we're adjourned, we'll be back.
Okay, good evening. Today is still Wednesday, March 20th, 2024. We are back from confidential session. Not coming through? You can't hear us? Is it better? So while Albert helps Mr. Grippo, just want to let the public know that we were in confidential session for the purpose of discussing confidential matters, including a student matter, a special education settlement agreement, and workers' compensation settlement agreement. Minutes of the confidential session will be made public when the reason for confidentiality no longer exists. We're going to request Dr. Rivali, who's already on the podium, ready for his presentation, to lead us in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance. Why? The United States.
... One nation, under God, indivisible, indivisible, just as it is.
Thank you. Can I get a motion to adopt the agenda, please? Moved by Nancy, seconded by Lori, all in favor?
Ah.
Thank you. We will not have a student representative report. Unfortunately, our student's car had a flat tire, so she can't make it. And for the minutes, our Vice President Sammy Shabon will not be in attendance tonight. And we move on to Dr. Rivali for his preliminary budget fiscal year '25 presentation.
Great, thank you, President Singh. So this is the '24-'25 preliminary budget presentation, March 20th, 2024. And just a reminder, the preliminary budget is not the finalized budget. Preliminary budget, once reviewed and approved by the Board, gets submitted to the county office. The executive county superintendent, on behalf of the New Jersey Department of Education, reviews it with his staff and finalizes it. Once it's finalized, then it gets advertised, and then the Board, in a hearing format, which is different than this format, will host a second opportunity for me to review the budget, and Stephen, Mr. Freed, to review the budget with the Board and the public. That will be in a forum that is a public hearing, at which point, different than this forum, we would actually be taking audience questions after the presentation is over, as well as Board questions. But for the preliminary budget, that's not the format. So we'll make this presentation, I'll turn it back over to you, Ms. Singh. We'll entertain Board questions first, then we'll sit down, and then during the public comment section, that would be the opportunity for community members to ask questions on the preliminary budget, since it's not finalized. So I guess why I told you that long, why I gave you that long explanation, because if you have any questions, write them down, because you're going to have to wait until the public comment, the first public comment session would qualify for this, because the preliminary budget approval is a motion on the agenda. So you'll have an opportunity to ask those questions then. Okay, on with the presentation. Here are Board members, all of them are sitting here in front of you already. Those that have an asterisk next to their name, they are members of our Finance Committee, and I thank them for working hard in helping us to arrive at what you're about to see. And notice the double asterisk that identifies Ms. Maris as our Finance Chair. These are our budget managers, and you can see there are a lot of folks that are involved in development of a budget, a school budget. Listed here is probably about forty, forty-some-odd folks, Superintendent of Schools, Assistant Superintendent for Business, so forth and so on, ten building principals, all our content, academic content supervisors, our Athletic Director, all these folks manage a piece of our school budget. And all of these folks have input on our school budget as we build it for the next school year during this school year. The goals for tonight, we're reviewing with you the budget calendar, we're going to review the previously approved budget goals, we're going to receive Board of Education input, and then public comment, again, during the public comment portion of the meeting, which comes shortly after, review estimated revenues, and then review next steps. Here is just the budget calendar, you can see, my purpose of showing this, Steve's purpose of showing this, is I want everyone to understand, this process begins in September. So we're building, we begin building the school budget for next school year as early as September of the year that we're in. So it's a long process, we've got lots of folks involved, as I said, and we finally arrive at this meeting, which is this year, March 20th, and then shortly thereafter, we'll submit, hopefully, the approved preliminary budget to the Executive County Superintendent. Once we have authorization, Mr. Freed will advertise that budget, and then we'll host our hearing on April 25th. After approved, on April 25th, the budget is then uploaded to the software and becomes available to staff to begin the process of procuring goods as early as July. Our fiscal year, as a reminder, runs July 1st to June 30th. Budget goals, so our process begins every year in September, with the Board providing some direction to the administrators in the form of budget goals. These are three of our budget goals, and I'm not going to read them to you, you're all very capable of reading them, I'm certain, but why I display this slide is because I want to make crystal clear that these goals also align very well to our Board of Education annual goals. So our budget goals marry our Board goals. And those blue things are hyperlinks, so when, when this is posted online after this meeting, you'd be able to go back and review all that. Not only do our budget goals align to our Board goals, but our budget goals also align to our strategic plan goals, right? It's important that we set a strategic plan. We approved that strategic plan earlier this year, a new three-year strategic plan. And here is demonstrating how our budget goals for this year linked well to our strategic plan. So budget goals align to our Board goals, budget goals align to our strategic plan goals, which then allows us to set our budget. And that's what keeps us focused during the budget building process, when we have so many folks working on it. The challenge, every year we have challenges. We want to support and grow programs while staying in whatever revenue limits we might have. And each year, that challenge is different. I want to highlight some of the challenges this year. Our first challenge, increases in healthcare costs greater than 10%. So that's a challenge, right? Now, we know we've got, we've put strategies in place to help control rising healthcare costs, and fortunately, that's helped to contain that number, because many districts are facing numbers that are even greater than that. So I think things like our health center will help to even further contain the growth of that line as we move forward. But as we know, healthcare gets, is expensive, and every year, those costs become more challenging. We have anticipated increase in transportation costs consistent with inflation, you know, gas prices are up, driver shortages, all of those things drive the cost of transportation. We're actually out to bid on a new multi-year contract, so we don't have an actual number there, we can only anticipate costs consistent with inflation, and that's what we hope to see. Increase of approximately 12% in estimated charter tuition, that's a big number for us, that's a $2.3 million increase. And when we're talking about a growth limit of 2% on a tax levy, that eats up 75% of that before we even do anything else. So that's a big challenge for us. A decrease in state aid of roughly $400,000, not a big percentage, but it's money. So those are the real challenges with this budget. So with all that said, let's highlight some of the things we were able to maintain, and some of the things we were able to add, despite all this. So one of our goals is to ensure the physical and mental well-being of our students and safety of our students. And many of these things here are either new expenses or existing expenses that we're choosing to maintain. And again, given the challenges we had, not an easy thing for us to do. First and foremost, we know that kids face behavioral crisis every now and then. There's a new expenditure that has come about in recent years, and that is, what used to be a free service to us at the county level is now a charged service. So the psychological screening services that once came to us through the county is now, for each screening, we're charged. It's a minimal amount, but it's a new charge, right? So we've got to prepare for that. Funds to support our transportation, you know, we're rebidding all of our transportation for a new multi-year contract, that's yet to be returned, it'll be returned shortly before the budget's finalized, but we are anticipating that it'll be at least consistent, if not more, than inflation. Expanding three part-time security officers to full-time, obviously, there's benefit costs associated with that. Funds to continue operation, great expectations, that's a mentoring program at our high school, a community mentoring program at our high school that we feel has, and we heard about that program last month, if you remember, when the OGE folks were here to talk to us, and we feel it's, it's paying some dividends. We want to support our Effective School Solutions Program, which is really a team of social workers that we use, consulting group that we use, that support our kids at the secondary level. Funds to support the adoption of a new threat assessment software piece, so, you know, we have a module, a new module that we're adopting, there's new code in place as of this year, that every school district conduct threat assessments, and there is a module to our current software called Hibster that will allow us to manage that more effectively. So we're needing to add that in. Good news is, we've expanded our maintenance, our surveillance systems, we're done with that work, but that doesn't mean it's over, right? So now it's our job to maintain them. So we've budgeted some dollars in here to maintain that. We're working on a meal enrichment program, we're hoping to pilot some of that at the very end of this school year, but we'd like to see that happen next year at one of our smaller schools that has the highest level of free and reduced population, and we would like to do some kind of after-school enrichment slash meal program. Funds to support operating our school-based health center, we have a partnership with the township, as you all know, and we are about to bid out, thanks to the township, who is going to help us to build a school-based health center. We're about to bid that work out, and they're doing that through a grant, and then we'll operate it, we'll have someone else, we're partnering with Zoofall, medical folks to staff it, but we will have some expenses, be that minimal, energy costs and whatnot, utilities to run that. So we've, it's not a building we have, so it's something we have to prepare for. Two is really our specialized programs, our pre-K programs, so forth and so on, that's our budget goal, and I wanted to let you know that we've got a lot of things in here we're maintaining, and some things we're growing. The first one is grant-funded, but part of our operating, are part of our expenses, and that is, we're adding another 85 pre-K seats. That should give us a little over 800 seats, if I'm correct, which means eight years ago we had about 100 seats, and we've grown that by 700. So we're using private providers, we're using every available nook and cranny that we have, and we're hoping that we'll occupy another 85 seats, which will bring us much closer to offering a full, universal pre-K 3 and 4 program. So we're excited about that. Again, that's grant-funded, but it is money that will come in, and we will send back out in order to support the education of those additional 85 seats. Our aviation program is taking off, no pun intended. That used to be a club. We, this year, created a class to support aviation in our high school. Next year, we'll be creating a second class, which will be the next level. We've got some exciting news recently, that one of our students who, and you all met this particular individual, who came up to talk about how excited, at one meeting a couple of years ago, he was about our program that we started a couple of years back. We learned that his interest grew, he went to Emory Riddle, he's recently graduated, and he has now got his commercial piloting license, and will be doing some work for commercial airlines. So we're very excited about that, and so is he. So, did I misspeak, Mary? That's exactly what that wonderful news was that his mom shared. We're adding and expanding our CTE program, so, you know, one of the things we want to really do is start to grow our own teachers. We know there's a teacher shortage, and we want to take advantage of the opportunity to work to grow our own, and our CTE coordinator, our CTE supervisor, and everyone else is working hard to try and introduce a new program at the high school called Tomorrow's Teachers. We want to further develop our business, our business marketing CTE program, and what I mean by CTE is career technical education. We want to start to really expand that program. A few years back, we had no programs, now we have four, four programs. Three? Go ahead, Eric. We have three.
About to have four.
About to have four. Right, and this would be four. Funds to support environmental studies, and that really is field trip funds. We would love to get back to the center, the environmental center, we know that a major storm did some damage over there, and we have to work with the township to get back to that facility, and if we can't, we're hopeful that perhaps we can utilize those dollars to go to some other places. But we want to get our kids back in the field, working on their environmental studies, or elementary kids, that is. Academic lab classes, we want to continue to support our kids, we want to build out our academic lab classes to better support our kids at the secondary level, and add more sections. We want to implement, we have a new literacy program called Benchmark Advance, and we're looking to implement the bilingual component of that, there's an expense related to the training involved with that. We all know that world languages is a challenge, and it's a challenge because there's, if any resource is scarce, world language teacher resources are really scarce. And we haven't been able to fill all our vacant positions, and we're needing to find innovative and creative ways to support our teachers who are delivering that instruction. And these are two programs, Edgenuity and Elevate, that we plan to use to do just that. Expansion of our bilingual ed program, we're growing a MIRA program at Claremont Elementary School to what we've been doing for years at Pine Grove, and that's because it's a growing population, and one campus is not enough anymore. We're expanding our elementary autism program, very much for the same reasons. We are continuing to support and grow with the Somerset County Educational Services Commission, our transitional program for students with special needs, and we'll be doing some curriculum writing, and that's a rough estimate, I ventured to guess that will be even a little steeper than that, and we'll have to work on that. But there are new standards, state standards, that is, in the area of ELA math and climate change, that are going to require some summer work to make sure our curriculum is well-aligned. Here are some things that we're very proud of, that, again, will require continued professional development. This year, we've rolled out a restorative practices kind of approach to discipline. The complement are punitive punishment program. We don't want to simply just suspend a child, give a child a detention, we want to make them understand where they went wrong, and how they can perhaps do better next time, and eliminate those repetitive kind of violations, and help students to grow while improving the climate and culture in our schools. It's proving to show good benefits, I can tell you anecdotally, and Mr. Wilson will share that data with you in a future meeting, that we're having less repeat offenders than we had, which means our attempt to use strategies that support restorative practices are working. And the same with CLR training, you all know what that is, and that culturally responsive training is something that we've invested in, and we can, plan to continue to invest, because school belonging is important, and every kid should feel welcome in their school environment, and CLR helps us to do that. Danielson, we are migrating, hopefully migrating over to Danielson 2022, which is a new teacher evaluation rubric, which aligns better to the kind of practices that we're using in our classrooms, because there is more of a focus on those practices that, and pedagogy that is involved with culturally and linguistically responsive teaching. So we're, there's not a big cost, I mean, Danielson's Danielson, but the cost comes in the training of folks. And, and we're not there yet, but we'll be working with our DACT committee, our District Evaluation Committee, to plan for that transition. Orton-Gillingham Training, we all know what that is, maybe not everybody knows what that is, but that's training on foundational reading skills, and very effective, highly effective, it's been great here, we've utilized it, and this is enough to help transition new teachers and teach new teachers all about OG, and how those effective practices can work in their classroom. Professional Development in Special Education, and website training for folks, because we are going over to a new website again. We have a new platform next year, new platform by that company listed, and it has some neat bells and whistles, and we're going to need to work with folks on how to take advantage of those bells and whistles to communicate with our families. Translation services, very important for us, something that obviously gets a little more expensive each year, but we take advantage of the opportunity, and we have so many programs where we invite folks in, we need, in cases where their first language might not be English, we need the ability to make them feel welcomed, and communicate with them, and involve them in their child's education, so that service becomes very important to us. You know, we have a video production that comes out quarterly, semi-annually, depending on what's going on, and we'd like to keep that going, because many people have found that to be very informative. And we also participate in the Franklin Times newsletter, so that there's a print version of what we do going around, and we're going to look to continue working on our invention competition district-wide, and continue to expand it, and the Satani Foundation does in fact support most of that, but there are some expenses for us as well. And then, I really highlighted this slide, I'm not going to go through those first couple things, you can see what they are, but the neat thing on this slide is the bottom two things, solar panel revenue and electrical savings. So you all had the foresight to encourage us to put our own solar panels on the Claremont Elementary School. Once we continued the construction of that, and finished the construction of that, we came back years later, and we talked about perhaps getting involved in a system similar to what we have on the rest of our buildings, where someone else would come in, own the panels, we would get the energy savings, and they would perhaps get the revenue from the solar stocks that were being sold. But then we decided, and we were encouraged by you folks, to maybe do that in a different way, and we did it, and this is what is happening now, which you all know, if you're on the facilities committee, happens all the time, monthly, but we estimate annually, we are now taking in as miscellaneous revenue, which offsets expenses to our regular budget, $85,000 through the sale of those solar stocks, and we're saving annually about $83,000 in energy costs. So what does that tell me? That was a really good move, right? A really good move, and something that we should explore, expanding as we retire, the other systems that we have that the county, that are county-owned, perhaps we should explore doing some more of this in the future. So I really wanted to highlight that, I know it's not an expense, but remember, a budget is both revenue-driven and appropriation-driven, and this is on the revenue side, that I think is just fantastic, so kudos to you all. This is just a slide that shows basically the staff that will be added to support much of what I said a little bit earlier on. The only thing I didn't talk a lot about was that additional teacher in health and physical education, and that really is to meet student demand, that's at the high school. Our classes are fairly large, and, you know, we've, I won't say we've grown, but we definitely would benefit by breaking those classes down a bit more, we have grown the department in that we offer more and more electives, so that puts a little bit more demand on the teaching resources dedicated to physical education. But I'm proud to say that, you know, we're very supportive of that, and we truly do believe that kids get a real benefit from health and physical education, and this budget includes the addition of a teacher to help meet that demand. On the revenue and appropriation side, I'm going to invite my friend, Mr. Freed, up here, he's our school business administrator, and I'm going to take the opportunity to let you know, he's done a wonderful job, this is his first time through the Franklin Budget, and he's done an excellent job on the number side of things, so, Stephen, you're up.
So I'm just going to give a quick rundown of the numbers. I'm just going to give a quick rundown of the numbers. These next couple of slides are predominantly the revenues. So this slide here is a summary of our tax levy. The 2025 total tax levy, we're projecting to be $162,114,985. That represents 84% of our general fund budget, so this district is very highly dependent on their tax levy. That's made up of the regular tax levy, which is a 2% increase on the prior year tax levy, which is $160,974,396, but it also includes a healthcare adjustment of 1.140589. That healthcare adjustment is what the DOE allows us as an increase to the tax levy to help offset what is typically the single largest budget appropriation, and is also typically well above 2%, so it's an allowable adjustment to help districts pay for, you know, healthcare costs. These next two slides, these next two slides are, you know, a summary of our cap reserve and our maintenance reserve withdrawal. and our maintenance reserve withdrawals. They are both basically parking places for unspent appropriations from two years prior. If you don't spend down all of your appropriations that you budget in a given year, and in this case, we're talking about FY '23, that money typically stays parked in cash in your bank accounts, and you can, that, you know, it goes into your different reserves. This process happens via the annual audit, and, you know, this became a topic of conversation probably in, you know, September, October. It was decided at that time, we were going to use about one-point-five million, again, of budgeted surplus. At that time, we didn't know that we were going to get a decrease in state aid and a huge increase in charter schools. So as I'll show you in a further slide, we ended up using a little more surplus in the form of unassigned surplus, which is basically the same thing, but you use it later, you know, now in the budget process as opposed to then, it's budgeted surplus. You can't change the budgeted surplus number once the auditor's certified, in any case. These next two slides are us withdrawing from our two reserves, capital reserve and maintenance reserve. We're taking two-point-five million out of capital reserve, and that's a list of the items we are going to be doing, our capital initiatives. That list was developed in conjunction with, you know, Dr. Ravalli, Brian, and the Facilities Manager. And these are typically items that are too large to fit in the general operating budget. Similarly, these items are the maintenance reserve withdrawal items, also done in conjunction with the Dr. Ravalli, Brian, and the manager of Building and Grounds. This slide is a snapshot of our local revenues. Tax levy, same numbers I indicated before, going up two-point-seven-two percent. Fund balances, our budgeted surplus number that I mentioned, the one-point-five-oh-two that was decided on, you know, during the audit. Tuition, special ed, this is two tuition students that we receive revenue on. I budgeted as flat, and the expectation is that we'll continue to have those two students. Capital reserve, two-point-five million, you know, a slight increase from what we took last year. And that, by the way, recycles each year. We put money back in, take it out, put it out, you know, you know, each year. Maintenance reserve, we did not use last year, so we're using one million this year. Unassigned surplus, that is the additional budgeted surplus that I was mentioning, that we decided that we do need to use as a result of the loss in state aid. I think we were kind of planning and hoping to get between one and two million of an increase in state aid, and instead of getting zero, they actually took away almost four-hundred-thousand. So that, that created a challenge, and we decided to, to reach into our budgeted surplus, our unassigned surplus. And that unassigned surplus typically is two percent of your total expenditures, and that's, for us, that would be three-point-eight million, so that's usually where it sits. And so we'd be taking a, you know, a, a million out of there, so we're comfortable doing that. You know, I did it in conjunction with, you know, Brian and superintendent, and with our auditors, just to make sure we weren't going off the rails there. And miscellaneous and interest income, this is, for the most part, made up of solar panel revenues, interest income, building, rental income, and all other miscellaneous revenues that don't fit in any other major category. And looking at trend, we felt comfortable pumping that up a little bit. This next category is our aid revenue. Total state aid, as I said, went down three-hundred-eighty-six thousand dollars. Those state aids are categorical transportation aid, special education aid equals nation aid and security aid. Next line is extraordinary aid. We're projecting this to go up roughly six-hundred-fifty-thousand dollars, you know, that's, I think, a modest increase. That aid amount is driven by, you know, an application that we put in. It's this big calculation wherein we summarize all of our out-of-district tuitions for private schools, public schools, and then the state kicks us back a certain amount, because, you know, they know that it's a huge cost for districts. So because we have more kids going out of district and the, and the related tuitions, we're also going to get an increase in aid. So the more we send out, we get, put back more in aid on this line item. And the semi-aid, that's Special Education Medicare Initiative aid, that number is actually fixed by the county office. They tell us annually what to book there. And so the total general fund revenues, this is Fund XI only, one-hundred-ninety-four million, oh-seventy-four-nine-fifty-six, up four-point-oh-nine percent. And of course, the expenses, they balance exactly to the revenue, same number. The next category there, total special revenue. Special revenue is the special revenue fund. It's Fund XX, it's our grant fund, and that is, you know, it looks like it's going down seven-hundred-seventy-five thousand dollars, and that is because it's standard practice to book eighty-five percent of your current year allocation on your title grants, your IDEA grants, and your non-public grants, because the applications haven't been done yet for next year. You don't know what your award's going to be, so it's best practice to book eighty-five or ninety percent. I typically book eighty-five, and that's what's been done here the past few years as well. And in addition to those, it's also our PEA grant. And the next one is debt service. This is our bond principal and interest. This is completely fixed by our amortization schedule, and actually is going down forty-five thousand bucks. So the total operating revenue, and total operating expenditures for that matter, will be two-hundred-twenty million, six-hundred-six-thousand-three-hundred-sixty-two dollars, an increase of three-point-one-eight percent. That's all I have. I'm going to turn it back over to Dr. Ravalli.
Thank you, sir. President Singh.
I would start with saying thank you for the presentation and open it up for the board members for any questions, so I'll start on my right. Erica.
I have no questions at this time.
Jimmy.
Question, is there a cap on charter school tuition increases?
There's not. No, so, and let me explain that, because I probably didn't do a good job explaining it. So how that works is the charter schools file a projection, I think it's around January, of how many seats they think they're going to grow, and that's checked against their charter numbers, what's, you know, what, what allowable, what their allowable numbers are, and then their current attendance, and then the DOE takes that projection and asks us to budget it as an appropriation or an expense, which is the challenge. So then what happens is, and we have a history of this, if it's over-projected, there is a regulation, and I forget the exact citation, but there's a regulation that then, in December, Mr. Freed will get a report, and it will adjust the remaining tuition payments down. And that has been the history here. The challenge, though, is that we're being asked to budget that money upfront, and now, which means we've got to make staff decisions and program decisions for next year, and then if we get a reduction, on the other end, in January, well, you know, for lack of better terms, the ship has sailed, right? The teachers have, we have to notify teachers on May 15th if they're being rehired or not. We chose not to do that, and we chose to use different strategy. We used some unassigned surplus, and we used some maintenance reserve, which allowed us to reduce our maintenance expenses on the appropriation side, which allowed us to fit some of that increase in there, and using some of the unassigned surplus, as Stephen alluded to, allowed us to help negate some of that impact. And then, of course, the waiver, the health benefit waiver that was allowable, helped to reduce the impact of the health benefit challenge. So that's the real challenge with how that works. Now, we've got a history, you know, I'll, I'll start my 10th year here in July, and I've, we've tracked this, and we've got a history here that demonstrates a trend of a six percent over-projection. Well, our total tuition, the tuition we were asked to balance is twenty-one million, nine-hundred-and-eighty-three-thousand dollars and some change, but call it, for lack of better terms, twenty-two-thousand, twenty-two million, rather, twenty-two million, call it, you know, twenty-one-nine-eighty-three, call it twenty-two million. So six percent of twenty-two million, that's a lot of change, right? Six percent of twenty-two million, ten percent would be two-point-two million, so half of that, and then add some, right? So we could get an adjustment, I'm not saying we will, but we could. We could theoretically, if history holds true, we could get an adjustment that would adjust that number down for the remaining payments starting in January, saving us one-point-two million dollars, but doesn't do me much good in January. No.
Thank you. That answered three questions.
You're welcome.
Bill.
John, so the mayor, the mayor said that, getting feedback with these things, the mayor said to expect a tax hike. Then I read that there's going to, there may be a water hike, and we lost four-hundred-thousand. Do you see anything in the tea leaves here?
Oh, yeah. I, I mean, if you're growing your taxable revenue by two percent plus a waiver, I mean, what do I anticipate? We'll probably have a reduction in tax, in, in, in tax rate, probably a slight deduction, a reduction in tax rate due to an increase in valuation, which is typical here, and I would guess we'll probably have a stable increase of what we typically have. But we're not there yet, because I can't give you that number until the county looks at our budget and finalizes it, because they could change anything. They could tell us to take something out, they could make us add something. It probably won't change these numbers much, but until we have that, we really can't give you that true impact. But my guess is it'll be probably stable, which for us, you know, runs in that neighborhood of a little less than ten dollars a month.
Just two questions. With your first slide, John, you, you stated that you was going to move three officers from part-time to full-time. Now, are we going to replace the others and place them into a part-time status, or it's just moving one to the other? Are you replacing?
Yeah, so, well, moving the part-time to full-time has an expense, because if you're part-time, you're not getting the benefits. If you're full-time, it comes with some benefits, so that's the expense I was talking about. The overall plan, we're still shaking that out. I don't know where he went. We're still shaking that out, but that's a possibility. The answer is that's a possibility.
And part B of that is, I'm, I, I may know the answer to this already, but have we identified the need of where we're going to put those full-times at, not yet?
Not just yet, right? And that's always the challenge with a school budget, is we're one of the only, that I know, but again, I've, you know, only been involved with school budgets, but we're one of the few entities that has to forecast so far in advance. You know, we're looking at a budget, it's March 20th, for a school year that begins in September, right? So that's what makes this real challenging. So the answer to your question is, we're still evaluating that, but we know we're going to need to move, and there is a want to move, three folks, or three positions to full-time, and we know that comes out as an expense, so we're preparing for that, and assuming that we may be keeping everything else. Now, if we don't, well, then there's a little bit of savings there. That's part of the forecast, though.
No questions. I just want to say Stephen and everyone else involved in the preliminary budget, great job, and thank you.
I want to echo what Walter just said. Congratulations on your first budget for us, and congratulations, and thank you to all the budgets, budget administrators, and thank you for putting together a really great budget. One comment about the charter schools, they're getting all the money upfront, right? So it prevents us from doing what we need to do, but they've already gotten all their money upfront, so their year's paid for, and the rest of it is coasting the rest of the way, even though those numbers aren't, might not be accurate. Correct?
Yeah, I mean, speaking as a school administrator, you're, for lack of better terms, the spending season, if you will, you know, occurs from July to December. I mean, that's when you're ordering your materials, that's when you're buying your books, that's when you're purchasing your paper, you know, there are things, there are expenses that go on all year long, don't get me wrong, but you're doing most of your purchasing in the beginning of the year. And many people start the close-out process in April, you know, March, April. So around this time, we're beginning to look toward closing the budget out, because you close it on June 30th. So yes, that's what makes, as I had shared with Mr. Parker, that's what makes it challenging is when we see the savings, we're seeing it at a time when we can't benefit the most from it. You know, we would much rather it be more consistent all year long, but, you know, that's the challenge of, and, and of no one's fault, that's the law, and that's the challenge inherent in the law, God bless. That's the challenge inherent in the law, is that it's, you know, it's, it, we're being asked to budget appropriation based on a forecast that may or may not come to reality. It just so happens we have a nine-year trend that shows it doesn't come to reality, and then we have to deal with, you know, the challenges related to that. But again, what I'm assuring you folks is, we're dealing with it a different way. And, you know, that unassigned surplus, that maintenance reserve, when that savings occurs, then that would fill those reserves back up, you know, as quickly as, and I'm, we're anticipating it'll happen, and if it doesn't, we'll have that covered as well.
As a follow-up to that, we have to stay within a two percent cap to charters? Do you know?
No, theirs is based on a projection. There's, you know.
So they can?
What they're capped at is their approved charter enrollment. So it's based on enrollment, and I can tell you exactly what that is. So, you know, we have about six or seven charter schools that kids go to. Some have declined their enrollment, and so we pay a little less, but then there's two larger that have projected increases, and then there's a formula that the Treasury Department uses to estimate what the cost per student is, and it's based on all your categorical aids, as well as needs of that particular individual, whether they qualify for Title I services, those kinds of things. And then you're charged, you know, they calculate an amount, and then they add them all together, and that's what they give us as they're projected, or what we're supposed to be budgeting. So I hope that answers your question. They're really, it's capped by the number of seats that are available in our charter, the amount of room that they have, and what's supposed to be considered as enrollment, but, you know, the challenge I'm having here is, we've got one or two charter schools that have had declining enrollment of Franklin students, but we're yet still getting a forecast of enrollment. That's why I'm confident that what we've done here is safe, because I don't think those numbers will come to actual fruition. And, and again, you know, so using that unassigned surplus and using that maintenance reserve is probably a better way for us to deal with this. You're welcome.
Lori.
I don't have any questions. I just want to say thank you very much to Mr. Freed, Mr. Banano, to you, Dr. Ravalli, and to the entire list of people that really worked hard to make sure that our students, despite really formidable headwinds in the area of aid, our students are still going to get the many wonderful programs that we've started, and I just want to say thank you very, very much. Good job.
Thank you.
Thank you, and I will echo what Lori said. Thank you to the finance team, the finance team on the administrator's side. Thank you to the finance team, the finance, uh, team on the administrator's side. Stephen, you've been phenomenal with, you know, presenting your first budget. I really hope, um, you know, I want to put this out there, that we can continue to maintain our programs, our staffing, and, you know, provide excellent education to our students. My worry is that, you know, this doesn't stay on a downward trend, that we keep, you know, getting decline in the budget, so we have to like make difficult choices in the following year. I really hope we don't get to that stage, but for this year, we're doing good, and I hope, you know, the county superintendent approves it, and we're on the right path. Thank you. And now, we're on to our superintendent's report.
And you just heard it, so big news in the budget, and that's really consumed most of our time, and I too want to... I guess mine?
I too wanna thank, testing? I too wanna thank Stephen. It was his first run-through, but by no means was this his first budget, and that was pretty obvious to me, so good job, Stephen, thank you. Uh, these are some real challenges, they're real challenges every year, and it does take a lot of time and effort to make sure that we are really putting a circle around those classrooms and keeping anything we have to do to try and make this all work out of those classrooms. And a lot of what you saw, strategy-wise, came from Stephen and his office, so, thanks, Stephen, thanks, Brian, Mr. Banano, he worked equally as hard on this, and, um, and so did all of our budget managers, Dan and Mr. Wilson, and everyone who, and I see Eric is here, he's our science supervisor, um, everyone who manages money in this district had a hand in helping to put this together, and I just wanna thank them, because it wasn't easy, for sure. And that's my report.
And now we're on to the board president's report. Again, a very solemn moment, I would like to begin with a moment of silence for our Vice President Sammy Shabon, who at this moment, with the Gaza fighting, has lost 20 members of his family. So please join me in a moment of silence. Thank you. So, child ID kits. Our district will be working with the Franklin Township Police Department in the upcoming weeks to distribute child ID kits to our student families. These kits are part of the National Child Identification Program, and can be used by families to gather and keep important information about their children, which can be used by authorities to help locate a missing child. School counselor award. We recently received word that Franklin High School Counselor, Dr. Wendy Bordeaux, was named this year's Counselor of the Year for Somerset County by the New Jersey School Counselor Association. So congratulations to Dr. Wendy Bordeaux from all of us. News from the Franklin High School Future Business Leaders of America. The FHS FBL-8 recent trip to Atlantic City was a wonderful experience for the advisors, and the 112 students were there who were able to participate. It was a great event, and the students were so professional, reported Karen Benes, one of the club's advisor. Along with the many distinctions awarded to our students, Diane Monro, District CTE Coordinator, received the Chapter Volunteer Award, and Dr. Jessica Nagurney was named Outstanding Local Chapter Advisor. Student successes will be celebrated at a special Board of Education meeting in June. Now for some athletic news. Congratulations to Athletic Director Ken Margolin and Assistant Athletic Director Anthony Britto, who will be recognized with service awards by NJSIAA at their upcoming Hall of Fame Dinner later this month. Congratulations to them and the entire athletic department. The following students' name were recently named as Scholar Athletes by the following organizations. For Skylin Conference, Zoe Ling and Ryan Morteck. For SEIAA, Mahib Singh and Jessica Uzor. For NJSIAA, Maya Zavatsky. Our girls track team won the winter season Group Four Stage Championship, and high school senior Daniel Arana won the triple jump at the track and field meet of champions. Congratulations to everyone. And here we have news for our Franklin High School musical, which will be Chicago this year. The show is for only one weekend, so make sure you get a chance to go. Tickets are $15, which shows at 7:00 PM on April 11th, 12th, and 13th, and at 2:00 PM on Sunday, April 14th. Finally, summer meal benefits. For our student families, if you have not already filled out an application for free and reduced meals, please do so by April 15th. If you qualify, you will also be able to receive benefits to help pay for groceries for your family over the summer. More information on this program is available in the District Announcement section of our website. And that ends the board president's report. And now we are on to comments from the public, five minutes per speaker, agenda items only. Can I get a motion to open for public comment, please? So moved by Bill's second.
Still second.
Seconded by Dennis, all in favor?
Aye.
Public comment is now open for agenda items only, five minute per speaker.
Saying no comment. Madam President, I move to close the public session.
Comments from the public are now closed. Brian, you got the names? Bill motion, Nancy seconded. And now we're on to committee and liaison reports. Can we have, Erica, can you do communications, please?
Yes. Okay, um, the, um, oh, you can't hear me? Then it's on. Hello? Better? Okay. Okay, so for the Communications and Public Engagement Committee, um, report, can you still hear me?
You may have to use the mic closer.
Let me see. Hello?
That's it.
Okay, so maybe it's volume, I don't know. Okay, all right. So, um, for the committee members that were present, myself, committee chair, Dr. Dennis Hopkins, uh, Dr. John, uh, John Ravalley, Arteman Singh, our president, Mary Clark, and Bill Grippo. The meeting began at 7:45 PM. The committee reviewed and discussed the online alumni newsletter, which was sent to our student families earlier this month, and to date had over 6,750 views. Work on the new website and phone message platform is underway in preparation for launch next school year. It is expected that a preview of the website template will be shared with the committee at their next meeting. Recent and upcoming events to feature in the township newsletter or other communication vehicles include the FHS Aviation Club balloon event on March 13th, where members of the club assisted in blowing up a hot, a hot air balloon and taking short rides. The Garden State Film Festival on March 23rd, where the challenge, a short video highlighting and depicting an assignment in the Aspects of Video Program, will be shown. The See America in Colors Civics Forum at FHS, uh, which will be held on March 28th, and the upcoming Chamber of Commerce Awards Ceremony on April 17th, where Superintendent Ravalley will be one of the honorees. Finally, in anticipation of an upcoming tabletop emergency situation drill, the committee discussed crisis communication considerations, including guidelines and expectations for student families during a crisis. The meeting ended at 8:00 PM, respectfully submitted.
Thank you. Dennis, can you do curriculum, please?
The curriculum instructional, uh, committee meeting, uh, was on March 11th. Um, the meet, meeting began at 6:00 PM. Those who was in attendance was myself, uh, Will Grippo, and our president, Arteman Singh. Also, um, Dr. Dan Lagerin, Dr. John Ravalley, Ms. Sarah Monti Agri? Did I pronounce that correct? Okay, thank you, Dan. Uh, Dr. Cobra, and, um, Mr. Eric Siegel. Uh, the new business that was discussed, uh, Tenerary Analysis Unit of a Study by the Common L, uh, Lit 360. This comprehensive unit would be pilot in grade six through eight English Language Arts classes in spring 2024, and aims to enhance critical thinking, reading comprehension, and literary, uh, analysis skills among students through engaging and diverse texts. No cost to the district. A new course, Digital Media Workshop for Students in Grades 10 through 12, beginning September 2024. This course would be available for students who are currently not enrolled in the Television Production CTE Program. The next thing. Uh, Dissection Study for Rowan University on the topic of Cultinary Responsive Teaching in Elementary Mathematics. The next one, a grant application in response to the Teacher Climate and Culture Innovation NGO made available through the NJ DOE. This grant, if awarded, will provide up to $200,000 to develop policies and programs aimed to reclaiming teacher time via reduction of paperwork and other administrative tasks, which the purpose of understanding their impact on teacher climate and culture within participating schools. And lastly, a grant application responsive, response to the expanding assessing, uh, access to Computer Science High School Course NGO made available through the NJ DOE. This grant, if awarded, will provide up to $400,000 to develop a course in cybersecurity at the, at Franklin High School. And one of the items we discussed was, um, a poet, uh, ly, lyret concept, and, um, the meeting was adjourned at 6:40.
Thank you. Jimmy, can you do policy, please?
Policy Committee Report. The meeting was held on Monday, March 11th, virtually. Committee members present, Dr. Dennis Hopkins, committee chair, Erica Inosencio, committee member, myself, Dr. John Ravalley, superintendent, board president Arteman Singh, and Senior Manager Policies, Regulations, and Communications Committee, Ms. Mary L. Clark. The committee reviewed and discussed Revised Policy 2423 of Bilingual Education. The revisions in the policy and the related administrative regulation were required to reflect changes to administrative code which revise the requirements for bilingual education in public school districts. These changes address the services multilingual learners need to meet or exceed the New Jersey Student Learning Standards. The policy has been revised and rewritten to incorporate these changes, and the title has also been updated. The administrative regulation will also be updated to reflect the changes in the code, and will be reissued by the superintendent after the second reading of the Revised Policy in April. The meeting ended promptly at 7:45 PM.
Thank you. Walter, personnel, please.
Okay. Excuse me. The Personnel Committee met on March 13th at 6:08 PM. Members present was myself as chair, Nancy Lacor, Sammy Shabon, President Arteman Singh, Dr. John Ravalley, Brian Banano, Jackie Snyder, and Colleen Depp. The Personnel and Negotiations Committee reviewed and discussed the following items. Personnel Report, uh, today, March 20th, 2024, number nine. The Personnel Committee reviewed the Personnel Report, appointments included, include teaching staff to start after this meeting and the upcoming school year. In addition, stipend recommendations include family engagement nights, parent ac, academy night, curriculum writing, STEM tutorial teachers, and literacy leadership team. FTEA Full-Time Release President. Mr. Banano reviewed the request from the FTEA for the Full-Time Release President for the upcoming 2024, 2025 school year. Workers' Compensation Settlement Review. Reviewed and discussed settlement requ, requests appearing on this board agenda. Summer Schedule 2024. Mr. Banano reviewed the proposal for the summer schedule for 11 and 12-month staff. District Buildings will be open Monday through Thursday, July 8th through August 15th. FTEA Negotiations. The committee reviewed the FTEA's initial proposal in preparation for the next meeting scheduled for March 28th. Uh, we had to get up the order, and the meeting ended at 7:52 PM.
Thank you. Nancy, Facilities, please.
The Facilities Committee met on Tuesday, March 19th at 6:07 PM. Present was myself, there, Walter Jackson, Lori Maris, Arteman Singh, John Ravalley, Brian Banano, Stephen Freed, Mark McNamara, and Ryan Ellis. We discussed, um, we, updates on the BOE Township Projects Meeting on April 4th. There is a, uh, joint meeting that's gonna be held between, um, representatives from the council and the Board of Education, certain, uh, select members from that. Pending Change Orders, Mr. Banano described two change orders. Um, how do I make this go up? Uh, I'm sorry. Um, a credit for asphalt paving at the new Buildings and Ground Building that was not completed, and a second change order to approve additional work at Franklin Park School Annex, partial roof replacement. Items currently out to bid are three projects. Um, the toilet projects are chiller replacements at Franklin High School, Franklin Park School, and Franklin Middle School at Hamilton Street Campus, toilet renovations, and transportation contract to and from all routes. Facilities roots, uh, facilities use, the committee discussed the request from Tamil Sangram to host an event at Franklin High School. An energy report, which is apparently is like the highlight of our meetings. Ryan Ellis provided a glowing report to the committee regarding the status of the Claremont Solar System, and the meeting adjourned at 6:54 PM.
Thank you. And last but not least, Ms. Maris, Finance Committee Report.
The Finance Committee met remotely on Tuesday, March 19th at 7:00 PM. In attendance were myself, Lori Maris, Mrs. Nancy Lacourt, Mr. Walter Jackson, Mrs. Arteman Singh, Dr. John Ravalley, Mr. Brian Banano, Mr. Stephen Freed, Mr. Mark McNamara, and Mr. Eric Siegel. Under the topic of financials and contracts, the committee reviewed the supplemental bills list for the month of March. Our charter school payments, the district paid $1,677,651 in tuition and $49,749 in transportation for the month of March. This brings the total charter school costs to $16,594,600 for the year-to-date for tuition. Transportation year-to-date, $349,241. There was discussion, uh, regarding South Bound Brook. Dr. Ravalley discussed the feasibility of exploring regionalization's study where South Bound Brook students would attend Franklin Township High School. Bound Brook currently res- Bound Brook currently receives the South Bound Brook students at the high school level. And we had a presentation on the fiscal year twenty-five budget. Dr. Rivali summarized some of the challenges we faced balancing the fiscal year twenty-five budget. Increases in healthcare costs of ten percent, transportation costs between five to eight percent, and charter school cost increases twelve percent, combined with a decrease in state aid of roughly four hundred thousand. In addition, Dr. Rivali gave a quick run-through of the budget highlights and goals, and Mr. Freed summarized the revenues and appropriations by category totals. The meeting ended at eight thirty-nine P M.
Thank you. Do we have any liaison reports?
Somerset County Ed Services Commission, as they serve as Vice President. Uh, this month, we met with the Negotiation Committee, uh, for Somerset County Ed Services, uh, to resolve some contractual concerns. Uh, a lot of Franklin students, uh, participate in that program, so, uh, I keep my eyes open.
Thank you, Bill. And now we're on to new business.
For new business?
Sorry. Um, Dr. Rivali, can you clarify the regionalizations?
Yeah, I just want to clarify that because, um, that was a little, uh, I'd like to color that in a little bit. Uh, that was a request. That was a query by the South Bound Brook School Board. I simply brought that to the Finance Committee because that was an email sent. I think they're exploring, I don't know if everyone knows this, but legislators are talking about, uh, or introducing bills about the possibility of regionalizing. This happened years ago as well. Um, I, I was actually in a school district at the time that, uh, was part of the elimination of a non-op, and we were asked or forced to regionalize with a district that already had us send receive with that same dis- with us. So, I think they're just exploring, and we were one of the districts they sent an email to to say, hey, would you be interested in exploring this? And the Finance Committee marching order was to just go back and say, well, at the end of the day, we don't have any special interest in doing so, but if you want to explore it, you're certainly welcome to look, look at it. I think that's what the marching order was. I just wanted to clarify that, um, you know, because that's all that was, was a email query as if to whether there'd be interest or not. So, thanks.
Thank you. And, uh, I just want to give the opportunity to the board members if they had any questions on the committee reports. Dennis? Walter? Nancy? Erica? Jimmy?
No questions.
Bill?
And, uh, Nancy, will you be in a position to give a full report to the board? Uh, as to the two committees meeting for the preschool, uh, we really want to take a full look at this each month as it develops. So, uh, I just want to put that on your radar for the future.
Lori?
New business?
Any questions on the committee reports? Okay, so then we're on to new business.
All right, I'd like to move R one, Monthly Reports, M one, Minutes of the Board Meeting, A one, Adoption of the Twenty Twenty Four, Twenty Twenty Five Preliminary Budget. A two, Travel and Related Expense Reimbursement. A three, Affirm Harassment, Intimidation, and Bullying Decisions. A four, Affirm Harassment, Intimidation, and Bullying Decision. A five, National Alcohol Awareness Month. A six, Women's History Month. A seven, P E A Budget. A eight, Donation, a donation of three thousand from the Franklin Athletics Boosters Club to be given to the Franklin High School Student Activities Account, and a donation of eight thousand dollars from the Elizabeth Avenue School P T O to be used toward the purchase of a school digital marquee. A nine, Revised Policy First Reading. A ten, Revised Policies Second Reading. A eleven, New Policy Second Reading. A twelve, Facilities Use. A thirteen, Sustainability Grant Submission. A fourteen, Employee Work Schedule for the Summer Twenty Twenty Four. A fifteen, Special Education Settlement. B one, Warrants and Payrolls. B two, Contract Approval. B three, and that's, I'm sorry, B two is A through P. B three, Change Orders. B four, Purchasing Manual. B five, Award of R F Q for Nursing Services. B six, Award of R F Q for Physical Therapy Services. B seven, Award of R F Q for Social Work and School Psychologist Services. B eight, Award of R F P for Therapeutic Mental Health Services. B nine, Rod Grant Agreement, Number G five dash six five six four and Number G five dash six five six three. C one, Out-of-District School Year Twenty Three, Twenty Four. C two, Field Trip Destinations. C three, Field Trip Applications. C four, New Course. C five, Dissertation Study with Rowan University. C six, Application for Expanding Access to Computer Science Grant. C seven, Application for the Teacher Climate and Culture Innovation Grant. C eight, Pilot Unit of Study. P one, FTA Association President Full-Time Leave. P two, Workman's Compensation Settlement. P three, Personnel Report Number Nine, dated March twentieth, twenty twenty-four.
So there is a motion to move R one, M one, A one through A fifteen, B one to B nine, C one to C eight, P one to P three. Can I get a second, please? Seconded by Nancy. All in, um, sorry, Brian, roll call.
Mr. Gripple?
Yes.
Dr. Hopkins?
Yes.
Ms. Inosensio?
Yes.
Mr. Jackson?
Yes.
Ms. LaCour?
Yes.
Ms. Maris?
Yes.
Mr. Parker?
Yes.
And Miss Singh?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. And now we're back to comments from the public, five minutes per speaker on any topic. Can I get a motion to open for public comment?
So moved.
Moved by Nancy? Seconded by Erica? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Comments from the public on any topic is now open. Please state your name and address, and you can come to the podium and make your comments.
Hi, good evening. Good evening. Uh, my name is Catherine Sackey. I live at fourteen sixty-five Eastern Avenue in Somerset. Uh, I just came here, um, just to talk about, um, the level of equity that we have with communication. Uh, there was an email sent, um, asking, uh, parents that have their children in fifth and eighth grade right now who are rising to sixth and ninth grade in September to do a re-enrollment form. And so the communication was only sent via email. And I believe that it does not give the parents, other parents, um, the opportunity to have the full thirty days, because not everybody have access to email, nor do people check their email. So I'm just asking that, um, you do phone calls, you communicate with the parents with, through teach- with the teachers, and, um, texting, because I know we get phone calls for every single thing. Um, but this one, I just think it just lacks a little bit transparency. And also I would ask that, um, in the documents that you all are requesting, that you also list secondary documents that are acceptable by New Jersey State Board of Education. And that's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else from the public?
So since it's no other matter of the president, I move to close out the, um, open session for the public.
Second.
Okay. Closing public comments. Motion by Dennis, seconded by Nancy, all in favor? Public, comments from the public session is now closed. Dr. Rivali, would you like to address this, please?
Sure, thank you for bringing that to our attention, and, uh, we certainly will ask Mr. Wilson to look into this. Uh, that's under his purview, and we want to communicate as many ways as we possibly can. So I'm going to ask you to follow up, Mr. Wilson, and as far as the sec- secondary documents comment, fair enough, and we'll see what we can do to work with Mrs. Clark, our Communications Officer, to see what we can, how we can make that better. So, thanks for the feedback.
Thank you, you're welcome.
And now we are on to good of the order. So we'll start with Dr. Hopkins. Anything for the good of the order?
No, uh, um, well, just one thing as we close out, um, Women's Month, um, let's, um, give honor and special, um, thanks and give our women, um, in your life, the flowers that they so deserve, and, um, let's close out Women's Month in a good way.
Thank you. Erica?
Uh, I just, uh, would like to thank all, um, all of you that put in the work, um, for the, regarding the budget. Um, uh, just wanted to say that since I didn't get an opportunity to do it, or not that I didn't get an opportunity, but I didn't, I failed to do that earlier. I want to say thank you, um, for all the hard work that was put into that. Um, it was, it's great, thanks.
Thank you. Walter?
Um, I just want to once, uh, also say, uh, to all the amazing women on this board, uh, Happy Women's Heritage Month. Uh, to all the women in this room, uh, Happy Women's Heritage Month. And a special, special shout-out to someone who we are all deeply going to miss, Ms. Jackie Snyder, who is retiring. Um, thank you so much for your committed, dedicated service to our district. Um, I know you would truly be missed by Dr. Rivali and his cabinet, but you will also be missed by us. So, thank you so much. Keep in touch. Don't have too much fun missing us, but we will definitely miss you. Thank you.
Thank you, Walter. Jimmy?
Yes, um, I just want to reiterate that, uh, the committee's thoughts and prayers are with the Chavon family as they deal with the incredible loss, uh, that they have had. And I know that, uh, based on the community work that he has done, the community is, uh, deeply, uh, behind him as well.
Thank you. Nancy?
Regarding Women's History Month, we are, um, shout-out to all of the women, um, I'm one of them. But we also need to make sure that we build strong women, and that we build confident women, and that we build women that can succeed. Um, and I think that's part of what we do here, um, serving on Board of Education in this district, is providing programs, um, for everyone to succeed, but also programs for women specifically to succeed. Um, and on to another woman, who has been an amazing woman that I've known since, I think I hired you. And you have just been a joy to work with, Jackie, and all of the personnel meetings, all the negotiations, all of the answers to things, and putting on a business hat in addition to your, um, school district hat. And I know that Brian will be lost. Which is okay. But, um, I, I want to wish you the best of luck and enjoy the next phase of your life and your family and everything else. Um, and to Jimmy's point, um, um, our hearts and prayers go out to Sammy's family and others that have suffered a loss, and I can't imagine what that feels like. So, um, um, we can just pray for peace, and, um, and that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Bill?
Yeah, just a few things. Um, I had the pleasure this month of, um, going to four or five schools to read for Read Across America, and it was really, uh, great how each school prepared and enhanced reading. A special shout-out to Franklin Park School during that process. As I was leaving the building, I noticed a class going over to the new library that's built in Franklin Park. So I followed them, and I went in and preschool teacher read to the children. I got the librarian, and, you know, I said, I've never been in this building. It just opened in Feb- in September. And what a partnership to have a library from here to that door to the school, and the kids going back and forth into this beautiful library. And I went to the council meeting and complimented the council for, because we used to have pocket libraries in Franklin Park in different stores and things. It was, was so nice to see. Um, S G S Play, the Little Mermaid was great. I attended that, and it was terrific. I look forward to Chicago. Um, Pine Grove Manor, I attended their math night last week. And, uh, Principal Hennessy does a great job, uh, with the bilingual activities with it. They had a cafeteria full of people, which was great. In that cafeteria full of people were representatives of the Franklin Food Bank, which brings me to the next announcement that the food bank is celebrated today. The reception of a million-dollar grant from, uh, the Bezo family, whatever it is. But it's a million-dollar grant. We were one of, uh, a few in the country. I say this at a board meeting, a public meeting, because of our relationship with the food bank and our relationship especially at Pine Grove Manor School. Uh, the food bank is very excited about future growth in the township, and we need a new building, and that's at Paramount right now. And then just the last shout-out is to Saturday, I stopped over at the high school to see what was going on, and there were, no, there must have been forty parents preparing baskets for Saturday night's tricky tray. So this is, uh, sponsored by the P T O of the high school and the booster club for our kids. And to see those parents working on a Saturday, uh, you know, it was just inspiring. So good luck to them. That's it.
Thank you. Lori?
I really don't have much to comment other than to wish Jackie well on her, uh, next chapter, and I'm grateful to hear that you will still be checking in every now and then with your buds. So we look forward to seeing you. Be well.
Thank you. So in closing, Women's History Month, so Bill, may I correct you? Uh, the Franklin Food Bank got the fund from McKinsey Scott's Endowments that she has built as a women philanthropist and not the Bezo family. She does not belong to the Bezo family anymore. Um, secondly, um, Jackie wishing you well. We've been doing that since we've heard the announcement of your retirement. And, uh, don't know if any of you paid attention to the Personnel Report tonight. We have another veteran leaving us, retiring, uh, Mr. Fico, the principal of Hillcrest School. He will be here until the end of the school year. But I remember Mr. Fico being the vice principal for my children. And one of my son has graduated already, and the other one will be graduating this year. So, Mr. Fico, if you watch this or the message gets to you, you will be dearly missed. Hopefully, we'll see you at one of the board meetings before you retire. And finally, I want to close with a women gem who lives in our town, and this is for you, Dan. Her name is Amy Jo Burns, and she's a women author. She has written her third book called Mercury. And her latest book is a Barnes &amp; Noble Book Club pick, Book of the Month pick, People Magazine Book of the Week, and an Editor's Choice Selection in The New York Times. So if you're looking for a woman who can come and read to children or read about her book, all her three books are part of her own life stories. And she lives in town. Her children go into our school. So if you need that information, I am here to give that to you. And with that, I wish you all well, and meetings adjourned.